Planning, zoning and building committee, roll call please.
Alderman Art Woods.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderwoman Fonseca.
Here.
Alderman Carr.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski.
Here.
Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Ardi Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Catalano.
Here.
All those present, need an approval for minutes, meeting September 11th, 2025, planning, zoning, building committee minutes.
I'll make the motion.
It's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. I have two reports, regulations relating to housing of chickens or residential properties. Before I entertain the questions, I'd like to see what the enclosures are going to be, what the parameters are for housing these, and two, I'd like to see surrounding neighbors giving acceptance to a backyard neighbor, side to side neighbor. I don't know how much noise chickens make, I know they cluck, but they taste good, but other than that, I don't know. Odors, what odors do they give away? Geese seem to litter everything, I don't know what chickens do. Other than that, anybody else have any questions?
Director.
I do have a very short presentation.
Okay, go ahead.
I didn't want to.
I didn't know if you wanted to answer the question before then, okay, go ahead.
So, we received a request to look into chickens on residential properties within Wooddale, so currently the code prohibits them. They've been prohibited for a long time, and it's in the nuisance section of the city code. And so, we did do a little research about how many police calls that we've had related to chickens over the last three years, and there's been 14 of them. So, the next step in order for us to do some research was to survey surrounding communities. We contacted 25 communities that are kind of in like a double ring around the city of Wooddale, and the results are up on the screen. Of the 25, 11 do allow them, but they all have some restrictions related to it. There are 14 that do not allow it at all. And so, what we wanted to do was really just put this out for discussion amongst the PZB members. If you are interested in having chickens, I do have a next slide that kind of zones in on what provisions or restrictions would you be interested in. But I think the first question we'd like to ask is, is the PZB interested in staff drafting some regulations to allow chickens within the city of Wooddale?
Thank you. I'd like to also add, chickens also attract foxes and coyotes, not that we don't have them already, but they're on the menu for their appetite, so remember that. Anyone have any questions? Alderman Ames?
So, I did reach out to some residents and got some feedback, just really limited since the amount of time was about a week or so. And I would be curious, because people were all over the board on whether they wanted this, they didn't, some were adamant, absolutely no, just because of what Alderman Sismarski said about attracting coyotes, or fox, or whatever predators, and if they're not enclosed properly, just some of the nuisances as far as, you know, odor, what if it's not kept up? They're concerned now with, you know, with small dogs or something, and if now predators are coming because there's chickens, what about their pets? I'm curious if it would be possible to put out a survey or get some kind of feedback from other residents at large, just maybe contacting their officials with, you know, maybe a few short questions about their interest in it, because I personally didn't know a lot about it, I talked to Alderman Carr a little bit about it too, I didn't know anything about chickens at all, learned a lot, but I'm sure a lot of people have similar questions since it hasn't been allowed in the past. So, I'd like to, you know, see if anyone has any feedback on maybe putting out a survey just to get some more community feedback on that.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I was probably one of those callers, was in my ward, had experienced a lot of complaints from the residents around this particular residence, it was one street away from me, and what was funny about it, in the morning, the rooster used to go off too, so I was getting a lot of phone calls on that, so going to get a lot of complaints, you know, I'm a no on this. And also, you know, we have rat problem going on, that's also going to be tracked it from the, you know, from all the dirt and stuff, so we got those issues going on, so I'm a no on this, so just wanted to let you know, I did get a lot of complaints from my residents.
Anyone else? Alderman Currielli?
Director Springer, those reports for the 14 cases, do we know anything about what the nature of the complaint was? Is it just there were chickens, or were there noise, or odor, pest, or anything?
So, of the 14, maybe half of them were related to chickens escaping from people's yards, so people did have chickens in all of those cases. And there was one concern, I think there might have been a concern about a rooster, and just general questions about their neighbors having chickens, you know, complaining about them.
So about half noise and half just a sighting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Woods?
So, if that, I think the idea that Alderwoman Ames said was pretty good, but before we put out, if we were to put that out just to ask a blank question, I think we should put it out with, these are the parameters that we would use, because if it's just blank, people just envision chickens running willy nilly all over the place, uncontrolled.
Like Hawaii?
Right, but if we put the parameters, that they got to be set back 10 feet from the side yard, so much from the house, whatever, can only be so big, so many, maybe people would be more accepting, so in fairness to doing a, you know, an accurate study.
To go along with you, would you not agree the neighbors to the left, to the right, and behind the yard should also weigh in, they have to see them?
Yeah. So, I get that, but we don't do that if you have a dog or a cat, you know, so we don't do it if you have a garage and you put it right away near your fence, so. I get why you would want it, but I mean, that's pretty restrictive, because if you've got three people around you, you got a pretty good chance one of them is going to say no. And then all of this is a waste of time, so that's my opinion.
Any other questions?
Well, to get back on, to get back on that subject where asking the neighbors around you, do you have to ask the neighbors around you if your lawn's long enough? You know, is it too short, is it too long, are weeds bothering you?
Lawn's not an animal though.
No, but neither's a dog, or if you're feeding your birds, you feed birds and squirrels, that brings rats, that brings issues.
We have surveys to get light poles up, or get three quarters of the block to get them, I'm just asking.
I wasn't talking about light poles.
We have to get a survey to get light poles up on the street, we got to get surveys for everything, this is just a simple survey.
Oh, no, I'm fine with the survey, but what I'm saying is, say, I want a chicken, that means I have to get permission from three houses around me, or in that case, one, two, three, four, five houses around me?
Is anybody up here a chicken expert that can answer a question on how much noise smells?
They're not very loud. It's the roosters.
I am not an expert.
The roosters are loud, and I would have to agree with no roosters, because roosters are allowed in ignarx, especially first thing in the morning.
Because there was a motion to look into?
No, we don't have a motion.
I thought she's, you didn't make the?
No, she was asking.
Oh. Do you want to make that a motion or suggestion?
What about the rest of the? Yeah, it's fired through, because we're talking about putting the parameters on there?
Right.
Right, and I would like to understand, how are the inspections going to take place, right, if they are following those regulations that we do identify and communicate out?
So, if the regulations were adopted, and they'll have some sort of restrictions, maybe, you know, these are some of them, they're up on the screen that we can review in a second, they would be required to have a coop, according to what we're suggesting, and in which case they need a building permit for it. So, there would be a building inspector that would go out and make sure that the coop met all of the setbacks, and, you know, make sure that there were no more than, let's say the cap is six, then there's no more than six chickens in there. And then we would rely on, if there was a complaint where somebody said, my neighbor has 12 and only six are allowed, then we would follow up on those types of complaints.
Thank you.
Alderman Ames?
So, I know you're going to probably go through this, but I guess my question would be also, we know there are people who currently have chicken coops, and they're not allowed, so how, I guess I would be curious if we move forward on recommendations, how would that be addressed, because they've already had them in place for possibly years, and against the rules, and how does that work? I don't have the answer, but I'm just asking.
So, normally what would happen, unless we craft the text amendment to state that pre-existing illegal, you know, chicken coops are allowed to remain, which we normally wouldn't do, because they're currently illegal, they would have to comply, but we would rely on people letting us know where those things are, because, you know, we can't tell driving down someone's street. We would obviously put it out in the newspaper to make many people aware of the new restrictions, and then hope that those people with chickens would reach out, and if not, we would rely on neighbors to let us know where they were, and then we would reach out and explain to them what the rules were.
The city manager's been through this already with pigeons. Any other questions?
Maybe I could go through these restrictions, because I hear two people are interested in doing a survey, maybe we could poll the rest of the group to see if they're interested, but if so, we should probably go down this list and see if this is what the PZB is interested in, because as Alderman Woods suggested, it would be a good idea to say, would you be interested in allowing, you know, chickens in Wooddale if they had this type of restriction? And you can do a yes or a no, we could have a survey that's set up, and you could, we could advertise it in the newsletter and in the e-news, and people click on a link, and then get to that survey, but it was a good suggestion to say, these are the, you know, the regulations we're considering. So, did we want to determine whether there was enough interest in doing a survey first?
Okay, so you go, Alderman Woods?
I'll make a motion to do a survey.
I'll second that.
Roll, roll call.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Then I can go through what these suggestions are. So, the first question is, should it be permitted by right, or should it require special use? The special use process would involve a hearing before the Community Development Commission, and it would require notification to surrounding neighbors if someone wanted to apply for a chicken coop, so just keep that in mind as you're contemplating whether special use should be required or not.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. So, on the special, would we have to go, not we, would they have to go through the whole, like, special use, like you wanted a bigger garage on your property, three month long ordeal with drawings and pictures and mailings and all that?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure we're on that same.
And after the CDC, it would proceed to the PZB and then city council, so each chicken person would have to go through that process. Is that something the PZB is interested in? I see three shakes of no heads.
You do another roll call?
Yeah, we're going to say no. Anybody opposed? Okay, next one. Should a city registration and/or fee be required? Some people do, some of the communities do require this, and it doesn't have to be a big fee, but it's a small fee for the city to have a list of where these are located, which ones are legal, and to keep track of how many they have, and who the proper contacts are.
Alderwoman?
So, is the, would this be similar to like getting a permit for like a swimming pool kind of thing, like people have, is it an annual, would it be an annual thing? Or, I guess that's what we're deciding, but is, I don't know, like, for people to get a swimming pool, do they have to get a permit every year for it? Or if someone wants to build a, you know, barbecue grill in their backyard of, you know, bricks or something, they have to get a permit, you know, for some, so it's a structure, it's some kind of a building, a permanent building, right?
Yes, so we could go either way on that. So, for rental licenses, those are every year, your business occupancy license, those are every year, but things like home occupations, we only do those once, you sign up once, you register your property, so we know what you're doing, and we know you're in compliance with the codes, and then we don't go back unless there's a complaint. So, I would think it would be the latter, but of course, the PZB can recommend whatever they'd like, but that's what the registration would be.
A question about the square footage, that also fall under the lot coverage? If you build a coop?
It would.
Do you have a lot of coverage to build a coop also?
Yes, that would be one of the things we would look at, because it would be a roofed over structure up to six feet tall.
Alderman Woods?
I was going to ask, just for clarity, what the latter was, you prefer the license annually, or the one-time permit?
So, I would say we should call it rather than a license, because attorney bond, that involves a judgment on whether the legitimate or not, registration is, we're just taking your information. So, we're thinking of registration, one-time, small fee, $100, or something like that.
Alderman Ames?
What about, I know, well, and I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for this extensive research, this was super helpful to see what other communities are doing, things I never even thought of. So, would they also have to register with like the Department of Agriculture, because it's, you know, their chickens laying eggs? I don't know, because I know like with beekeepers, they have to register, you know, if you have a beehive, not that we're talking about that, but I'm just saying, like, I don't know if the Department of Agriculture.
FTA.
I do not know the answer to that, because I am not also a chicken expert, but we will look into that, and I'll know that answer before this comes back to you, if it comes back. So, registration, any knows? Okay, third item, these are the restrictions we're suggesting be considered, we looked through all of the other communities' regulations, and these are the ones that seemed to make sense for Wooddale, but obviously we want to get confirmation. So, we were thinking residential districts only, no roosters, and a limit of six hens, that seemed to be about the average for other communities. You have to have a coop and an outdoor enclosure, maximum of 150 square feet total, that's 10 by 15, that's very generous, so we wouldn't want it any larger than that. And then the coop regulations, they'd have to be in the rear yard, 10 feet away from the side or rear property lines, they must have at least four square feet per hen, so that's 24 square feet, that's a minimum, and the maximum height of that structure would be six feet, and you wouldn't be allowed to slaughter chickens, and you must keep your chicken feet in a rodent-proof container. Regarding those restrictions, were there any that any of the members would like to have removed or added?
Number five, how are you going to control the slaughter? I could easily go back, cut the neck off and eat, make chicken soup, I mean, it's, I mean, I know other animals have tags and ankle bracelets, and geese and everything else, but I don't know, I could easily bring one home and get rid of one, and you wouldn't even know.
So, again, with something like that, we're looking to kind of control somebody that might be raising these to sell chickens, that, for food, and we would rely on neighbors saying, my, you know, my neighbor is every three days chop, you know, it's that type of thing. If we got a complaint, we'd follow up, and they'd get a violation notice that they, you know, weren't supposed to do that, but we acknowledge we would not be able to regulate every coop that way.
Alderman Currielli had his hand.
I had a question about the sturdiness of the coop, or whether it's like a temporary structure, or a shed which has to meet certain wind requirements and snow requirements, it's, what, how does that work?
And BADA compliant.
Again, that's a very good question, and I will do some research and follow up on what the requirements are for something like that, if there are any. My, I would imagine our building code reviewer, at the very least, would require it to be anchored to the ground properly, so it didn't fly off, but I'll go look into that.
Alderman Ardi?
So, if someone decides they're going to ignore the six limit and have 20 of them, and a neighbor wants to tell on them and calls the city, who's going out? Are we allowed to go in people's backyards and investigate coops for, like, I don't know how any of that works, so.
Yeah.
I know the police are limited, and how many people can be out there, I don't think we're sending cops to do it, I don't think Allen's driving, so who does that?
That would be Community Development Department staff.
So, the same inspectors who are doing property maintenance?
Exactly, so we would approach, knock on the door, you know, until we got a hold of someone, we would also follow it up with a letter.
But are we allowed to even go see for ourselves? I don't think you can walk on?
Usually if there's a complaining neighbor, that person will allow you in their house to see what's going on, or they'll send us some pictures.
Alderman Ames?
So, a couple other things on the list, is that the end of D for the, I didn't know if you had another slide after that, so the one thing on here that I read, the run must be attached to the coop and be covered on all sides, including the top, I don't know if that's a given, or that needs to be stated, because one of the residents I talked to, he's got a lot of hawks in his yard, and he's like, I don't know if they can come and take them, because again, another predator issue, so I think just to specify, including the top. And then, another person brought up, which is on one of the towns here for Roselle, sale of eggs is strictly prohibited, and I didn't really think about that, but I mean, usually eggs are refrigerated, and if somebody's selling, I don't know how many eggs a hen lays per day, and if you have six of them, like, how many eggs can you possibly eat in your family, you know, and if you're going to be selling, I don't know, that just seemed like a interesting requirement. And this, again, seems pretty obvious, but maybe you need to, you know, coops must be kept clean and sanitary, I mean, you'd think that people would do that, but sometimes property maintenance issues get away from people, and just thought it might be worth mentioning that.
So, if I could respond to the selling of eggs, that is entirely up to this group to determine whether that should be allowed or not. Often, I think the reason that Roselle did that is they must have had a problem with people having a lot of chickens, and then having excess eggs and setting up stands or signs that you can come here and buy eggs, because then it becomes a home occupation, and then, you know, people are coming to the property, it can be a nuisance for the neighborhood. But generally, if we're limiting at six chickens, I don't know how much they lay, but maybe a few a day, my guess is that neighbors and friends will be recipients of eggs.
Right, and I, sorry, just I think because it's typically, and I don't know if it's maybe Alderman Carr, I know you know about chickens, but it seems like eggs need to be refrigerated, and if people aren't storing them properly, then there's a potential of something, you know, being sanitary, I don't know, I'm, it just caught my eye when I read the list.
Mayor had a question?
Stacy, so, in the bottom here, it says in addition to city requirements, residents would also require, be required to register their property with the Illinois Department of Agriculture?
Yes. Yes.
So, is that in all communities, or is this just something that you were putting in there for Wooddale?
That is something we, I believe we learned in doing some research, so I will have to confirm that, but that may be what the question was about having them registered with the state.
Kind of like restaurants have to have the health department come out, so. That's why I was just curious, I mean, because a lot of the things you have on that list, Roselle has, I mean, the numbers may be a little slighted, a little different, but a lot of what Roselle has on that list you have right there. But I just couldn't figure out anyone having this other requirement, so I don't know if that was something staff put in, or if that's something that's actually required.
I will double check.
Alderman Carr, you had your hand.
Yeah, to get back on the eggs, typically, the store-bought eggs that you guys get normally sit out of a refrigerator for at least 60 days before they even get sent to a store, and when they get shipped, once they get washed, then they have to be refrigerated. Then you have a time limit of like two weeks before, three weeks before you can eat them, like, before they're done, before they're expired. So, when chickens lay their eggs, you have, I don't remember if it's like six weeks, or eight weeks or something, that you don't have to wash them, and they're still good. So, they actually last longer not being refrigerated than they would if you washed them, put them in a refrigerator.
I don't know, I'm thinking.
So, if they have to register, of course, register with the city, and if they do sell eggs to the public, or give them away, and somebody gets sick, are we liable?
I will confirm with attorney bond, but no, it's like somebody selling, you know, vegetables out of their backyard, you know.
Alderman Fonseca?
I have a question regarding any kind of fence requirements, so similar to certain pool structures, we do require fencing around those, so for a chicken coop, depending on the size, or whatever kind of chicken coop they're putting up, would there be any kind of fence requirement, especially to appease the neighbors or escaping of chickens?
So, we haven't seen that in any of the other regulations that communities have adopted, it doesn't mean that we couldn't impose that, but the reason fences are required around swimming pools, it's a life safety issue, and it is required in the international building code to have fences around pools, and so that's why that's in the code. But if you wanted to have screening fences or require enclosed yards, we could add that additional restriction on here. It's, the more restrictions we place, the less likely people are going to want to, you know, register, but.
Mayor?
Regarding, so when they build the chicken coops, I've seen some, right, so when they build a coop, they might have a little run outside, but it's like a little but it's like a little, they put a little fencing, and they have some type of wiring or screening or whatever you want to call it.
And where?
Because if it's open, you're going to have the raccoons coming. I'm like, why you got all that? Why is it all blocked off like that? Otherwise, the raccoons try and break in. So, there's going to be something. They're not going to be, like you let the dog out in the yard. He runs around, you know, and you got the electric fence. They're going to have, they have to, otherwise, you're right. The raccoons are going to eat them, or the foxes.
You have further questions?
So, I heard addition, possible additions of fencing on all sides and the top of the run. No selling eggs. It must be clean and sanitary. Is anybody opposed to adding those to the list of regulations, restrictions? Okay. So, in summary, what I understand that I heard is we are going to do some sort of survey to the community through either the newsletter or whatever methods our public relations, communications, and marketing director decides. And then, we will report that back at upcoming PCB meeting. And then, if you would like to proceed, then it would be for staff to create, draft up the regulations. It would need to go to the CDC for a public hearing because it would be an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. And then, it would come back to PCB for a recommendation in City Council for final approval.
So, if I'm understanding this right, we have to table this upon the survey.
No.
We'll bring it back to the next CDC. Just redo it, go back.
Yes, when it's ready, we will put it on the agenda for another discussion at PCB.
Okay. So, all we voted on was the survey, then?
Yep.
With parameters? So, we're not voting? That vote was just for a survey, not including what we have on the agenda? The agenda doesn't say anything about a survey, but?
No, but the motion was to do the survey.
So, we'll just leave it be?
So, it's basically the direction.
Nice. Second?
For clarification, the survey would include some sort of summary of what the regulations would be?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on. Number two, we got a facade grant program guidelines and process. Ms. Springer.
Thank you. So, we tonight are seeking direction on the eligibility requirements and the procedural steps for the facade improvement grant. Following a negative recommendation from the PCB on the first industrial zone facade grant application, staff is seeking direction from the committee regarding whether the program should remain applicable to industrial properties. And we're also, a second question, we're seeking direction on what happens to cases that come to the PCB and receive a negative recommendation because the code is not clear on that. So, let me walk you through a few slides. We have amended the guidelines about four times in the last 10 years. Back in 2014, it was a maximum of $50,000. In 2015, we allowed signage, and we prohibited parking. In 2016, we increased the amount to $130,000, and we implemented a scoring matrix. And then, last year, we increased the minimum grant award to $200,000, and we added industrial properties fronting a gateway corridor as eligible. So, this was, is a complete summary of all the changes we made back in May 2024. And I highlighted the one that says, "The program was expanded to include all commercial and industrial properties." All commercial, there should be comma, and industrial properties directly abutting a gateway corridor, community gateway corridor. So, these are the gateway corridors in the city. So, some of the streets are much more highly traveled by residents and people passing through the community. And that would include Devon. It would include Thorndale, Wooddale Road, and perhaps Route 83. But according to our comprehensive plan, Central and Middle are currently listed as gateway corridors. So, the first of the two items we need direction on are, should the facade guidelines be amended regarding the eligibility of industrial properties? And here are some suggestions. These are not your only options, but I just wanted to help, you know, get people thinking about potential options. So, should we revise the list of streets to exclude Middle and Central? And then, maybe leave Devon, Wooddale, Thorndale, and Route 83 as only those properties on these more highly trafficked roads would be eligible for facade? Do you want to cap the grant? So, should it be $50,000 for industrial grants rather than $200,000 for commercial? Another option is limiting the percentage of reimbursement to 25% instead of 50%. And another option is eliminating industrial properties entirely. So, I'm looking for some direction on that.
Alderman Woods.
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Before we stick up, and we have an avenue to bring the prior industrial property?
That's the next question.
Oh, I'm getting out of my...
Yes. It's more related to process, not particularly to that case.
All right.
So, we need a roll call?
Yep.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Curie Lee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Epstein.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Thank you. So, the second question is, per the UDO zoning entitlements, so if we have a variation, a special use, a PUD, if it's brought forward to the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee, and the recommendation is fair denial, the UDO does state in there that for due process right purposes, it does need to go to City Council for a final vote. Unfortunately, the guidelines and the city code are silent on what happens to facade grant applications because they're not regulatory. They're guidelines, and it's a grant. So, we, the staff is unsure what to do with projects that get a negative recommendation at PCB. And so, we are seeking direction. Should the facade grant applications that receive a negative recommendation from PCB proceed to the City Council for a final decision?
Alderman Carr, you have Woods.
So, I'll make a motion that they do proceed to City Council.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Curie Lee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curie. Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to respond to Alderman Woods. So, that means the case will be on the next City Council agenda for a final vote that, from last week.
And even in the, I'm sorry. Even in the future, once it's just limited to Irving and Wooddale, if it fails because we don't like the project or there's something about it, this will give them the opportunity over the course of that week to change something before they come to council. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Alderman Ames.
One thing during the process of this that I was looking at is if the program itself should have a maximum. And I was kind of comparing it to like if, you know, communities give out donations per year. There's a cap per year of so many thousands of dollars. And once that's met, then the program is finished for the year. Is there like a cap that could be put on this for, you know, an annual amount or something?
See, Mayor Remmers.
Well, I guess all we need to do to get more participation in a program is not fund the program because this was the first year we didn't actually put the line item. And then, we have all these people interested in it. So, typically, we do have a cap, and that's the budgeted item or the budgeted line item. And then, once we would hit that, then that would be the end of it, unless the council wanted to go over budget, which we typically don't want to do. So, this coming year, in the budget planning process, we'll probably be reinstituting the line item number. And then, that is the cap. So, it's probably a first come, first served, or first come, first served. And once we reach that cap, that's how it historically was until this year, we kind of deviated, and then it kind of got a little crazy.
Follow.
So, then, in this, in this case, since we had given the $200,000 grant for the other property, and then if we've got this one, you know, coming back, so there is no cap at all or a limit for this budget year then? On this, since we didn't have a number then?
See, Mayor Remmers.
We budgeted zero just because it was messing with our fund balance and cash flow because year after year, we were budgeting 150 or 200, and then, you know, spending zero or spending 30. So, it was inhibiting our ability to fund other capital projects. So, that's why we put zero to try to, tried that one year. Obviously, that didn't work either. So, yeah, we're at zero. We funded some other projects. So, it's really up to you if you want to continue to fund projects this fiscal year.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I was going to say, that's something that in the past we've addressed, depending on how the budget was going. And also, the timing of the projects and the length of time of the projects, just because that person applies in this fiscal year doesn't mean the expenditure will be this fiscal year. It might be next fiscal year, too. So, there's a couple layers to look at as we go through that process.
There were some years where we had some, you know, we were approaching, you know, being at the top of the budget, I believe. And there were, there were projects in the hopper, per se. And we would let that business know that, hey, we've already kind of got a couple applications in. Like Alderman Woods said, you know, keep yours, you know, in. And then, once we start a new fiscal year, you'll have done your due diligence. We would have approved it, and then we'll fund it. So, I think really, once we get to budget planning process, CIP, decide on what number you want to allocate based upon some of the new criteria that you just established last year, or last year with the higher number. And then, we'll kind of get back to a baseline budgeted number.
Mayor.
Basically, I know we said, if somebody's got a project, bring it forward to us and let us at least talk about it, have a quick discussion. And if we want to fund it or find the money, maybe some projects came in under budget or something. Just so we don't just say, nope, we're out of money, you're done. At least, we know somebody wanted to do something. At least, we can look at it. Maybe it's an area of town that we really needed to get done.
Yeah, we, whenever we get interest from anybody with, you know, wanting to spend money, facade, we never turn them away. We either, we tell them, hey, we're approaching kind of the top, but hey, don't go away. I mean, we never just say flat out, no, we're not interested.
Right, right. And that's, and that's what I'm just saying. That's, that was our stance.
Alderman Fonseca.
For the specific project that will be presented to the council, is there an opportunity to review the dollar amount that was up for discussion? Is that up for discussion? Or is it that same request?
Yeah, just procedurally, anytime one of these comes up, you're free to amend any amount or do what you want at the council meeting, you know, deviate from committee discussion. So, yeah, when it comes to the council meeting, it's really open up for discussion again. While the bulk of the discussion always happens at committee, that's where things are vetted out. That's not to say we can sit and talk as long as you want at the council meeting all over again. It's really up to you guys.
Alderman Curie.
I just wanted to chime in on the idea of a cap. I think the mayor said it, and Jeff said it. There's a lot of work that goes into putting together one of these proposals by staff, by the company, by a streetscape committee. And just to say that, oh, sorry, we don't have enough money. It's sort of painful. And I don't want, I don't want to go through that as a chair of the streetscape committee. And I don't think staff wants to do that either. So, I think we have to take each one as it comes. It's, it would be difficult to have 200,000. We fund one, the other one's a month behind, say, sorry, we're out of money. So, I'm opposed to the idea of a cap. But that's something I think we talk about at budget time.
Alderman Woods?
Just final comment of how those all progress along. And since we changed the rules, we don't pay anything until the end of the project. So, by the time they go through this process, permit, finish their drawing, go through that criteria, then go through the project itself, these are always plus or minus a year-long process. So, as we look at the budget today, one gets, if another guy could come in four weeks later, he'd be in the next fiscal year, based, just on the process calendar.
Correct.
Just really quickly.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Just to confirm, so that, in advance of them coming back again next week, now that we approve that, the Osti catering business, that's not going to be paid out? We anticipate not going to be paid out until the next fiscal year, right? So, that, that one that's already approved is not taking up what's available for this year? Is that right?
Yeah, but even if it comes this year, you said we could, we still have enough money.
Yeah, we had discussed this with Director Wilson. And irregardless, if he finishes this year or he doesn't, we still have the funding to cover this new...
For the one that came last week?
Yeah, correct.
That's all, is it? Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Alderman Carr?
So, with that funding of the money, that money that we put aside for next year for that project, is that taking out of next year's project money, then? Or how is that working? Because like, if we go on and allocate X amount of money for all these projects, and we got two other people that want to do projects next year, too, now we're way past their budget for next year's budget projects. How does that work?
Typically, every year in the CIP, we, we budget, let's say, a million dollars for all of our projects. But we always say some projects will inevitably come over budget, and some will come under budget. It's the same every year. So, that's how we're kind of able to fund a project like that, so the facade program. You know, we had zero, but there's things that will come in under or things that will get delayed. And then, there's usually some wiggle room. This is not a huge expenditure in the grand scheme of our capital plan. So, that's why there's more wiggle room with stuff like this. If this were a massive, you know, water main project, it wouldn't work like that. But since it's a smaller type expenditure, there is some wiggle room from year to year.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Very fast.
Yeah.
All right. Items to be considered at future meetings. Brinmar III, PUD, October, November. At the building code rewrite, November 13th. And number three, the UDO tax amendments in December. Anything else that you want to add? That being a no, make a motion for a German.
Second.
You make the...
I made the, yeah, I made the motion for your second. She is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those who don't see anything, okay.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting. Let the minute ticker note that the same elected officials and staff are present. First, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Any comments, corrections? It looks like we don't have the date of the meeting minutes on here.
September 11th, 2025.
You got to turn the page.
Put the song.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, first approval of proposal from Dami Mechanical Industries for the South Wastewater Treatment Plant blower repair in an amount not to exceed $27,500. That is my motion.
Second.
Director Lane.
Thank you, Chairman. The South Wastewater Treatment Plant has two blowers which feeds the aeration tank. They were installed in the 1980s and it looks like they used some of the older wiring. It's aluminum, it's not up to current code. A few weeks ago, we had a storm which resulted in a power surge which fried one of the motors and ruined some of the wiring there. So we are going to be replacing one of the motors on the blowers and redoing some of the wiring to avoid this happening in the future.
Any questions? Alderman Sosmarski?
How often do blowers go out in the plant?
Well, those blowers are from the 1980s, like I said, so they last a good long time. The motors will go before the blower does, but we are looking at probably having to replace one of the blowers coming up here in the near future. So we'll account for that through the CIP process.
Okay.
Any other questions in this one? Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Elder woman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmarski?
Yes.
Elder woman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Finally, approval of amendment number one to the professional services agreement between the City of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman for Phase Two Engineering Services for the Middle Drive Resurfacing Project in an amount not to exceed $10,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Director Lane.
Thank you. So Middle Drive is one of our few federal aid eligible routes in town. And under the 2024 Call for Projects, we applied to have it resurfaced from Devon Avenue to Wooddale Road. You can see that blue line there is the original limits. It has a lower daily traffic count. So we increased our local share funding in the application to 50/50 as opposed to 70/30, which is typical for STP projects in order to score a little bit higher. We were placed third on the contingency list and a couple of things have happened since then. First, DMMC, who manages the STP funds, notified us that there is available funding to move projects from the contingency plan into the active program. So we applied for that extra funding to get moved into the active program. And then COMED notified us that they will be installing parallel ducts under our roadways. You see the purple line there to feed the proposed Brinmar substation. And as part of that license agreement with the city, we will be requiring that they resurface the roads in the areas that they're working. So obviously, we don't want to expend funds to resurface Middle Drive if COMED's going to be doing it for us. So we reached out to DMMC about revising the limits for Middle Drive to just include the northern portion there. That would be the solid blue line and removing the dashed blue line area, which will be resurfaced under the COMED work. And since we're cutting the project nearly in half, we asked to increase the federal share from 50% to 70%. So that was approved at the DMC meeting back in August. And this work of revising the plans in coordination with I.D. DMMC and CMAP resulted in some extra engineering fees of about $10,000. But ultimately, we're saving about $600,000 in construction costs over the project. So pretty minimal in the grand scheme of things.
That means we get lots of extra facade money then?
Sure. Few projects at least, yeah.
Alderman Currielli?
I just had one question. The scope of the project was reduced, but the engineering costs went up by 10,000?
Yes, this is for the Phase Two design. So we already had an agreement with Baxter and Woodman.
Right.
To design the project. So they designed it and then they had to go back and revise the plans and have some additional coordination, presenting to DMMC and back and forth with I.D. and resubmitting the plans and the applications and the agreements. So it resulted in some extra work for them. So the, the construction costs have been lowered and the construction and engineering costs will be lowered, but there was some additional Phase Two, which is the design portion work.
So that wasn't already done, the Devon to Bowman Drive, that wasn't already done?
Correct. They have to revise the plans, resubmit, and then there's back and forth between I.D. and DMMC. So a little extra work during the design phase to save $600,000 during the construction phase.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Elder woman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmarski?
Yes.
Elder woman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, Middle Drive, Phase Three Engineering in October, Hawthorne Sidewalk also in October, Ward One Drainage Improvements, November, December, Central and Irving Signalization, November and December, Forest Preserve Permanent Easement, Mary Jane Lane Drainage Project, also November, December. Does anyone have anything else they would like to add? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.